All right, good morning, everyone. It is 8:30, and I shall bring together the committee of the whole for October the 15th. We have an agenda before us. Are there any additions or deletions to that agenda? Councilor Christie?
If not, I'll move the agenda as presented.
All righty, we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor. Okay, carried unanimously. We've pre-circulated the minutes of the September 17th committee of the whole meeting. Are there any errors, omissions, corrections? Deputy, or Reeve King.
You're the chair. I'd make the motion to receive the September 17th committee of the whole minutes as presented.
All righty, so we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor, carried unanimously. Anybody want a break? All righty. So, we will go to checkpoint one, economic development plan. It has been delayed a couple of times, but I think we're probably looking forward to having it happen today. Welcome Ms. Bergrant, and welcome Ms. Kester.
Good morning, council.
Morning.
All right, so we've got the RFD up. All right, so we're returning today to present to you for further discussion the economic development plan. In the RFD, I included some of the notes and discussions from the previous committee of the whole and council meetings, just for some background, and just so we can have some richer discussion on some of the points that were brought forward. So going back to 2023, administration received approval from council to develop the economic development plan aimed to foster sustainable growth and prosperity within the county. Tara Zeller, economic development consultant, was contracted to aid in the development of the three-year economic development plan. So through this plan, the Neheo County aims to establish a framework that fosters opportunities to build a resilient and diverse economy. In turn, this will enhance the livelihood of its businesses and residents, making the county an attractive destination for investment and growth. The economic development plan aligns with the county's strategic plan, the 2019 municipal development plan, and the preliminary outcomes from the 2024 municipal development plan, working groups, the land use by law, and through open dialogue and engagement with the stakeholders, businesses, and residents throughout this planning process. Administration presented the economic development plan to council at the committee of the whole on June 18th, and with this were some recommendations to be brought forward at the July 23rd meeting. At this meeting, council motioned that the economic development plan return to the committee of the whole on September 17th, which was then delayed to today. So just to kind of go through some of the changes, so if we just flip a little further down on some of the discussion. So just to kind of go through some of the changes, so if we just flip a little further down on some of the discussion. I provided in the executive summary some three different options for council to review and to have some discussion around. I know there was, you know, just some feedback provided that we wanted to show that it was more open for business, and so I'm hoping there is an option in there that council can provide some feedback on, just for some further direction for us. So I know how we want to proceed. Would you rather me just go through one by one and then have a discussion, or do you want me to lay it all, all of the discussion points forward before we have discussion?
We'll see how it goes.
Okay.
Try, try going through it all, and if we stop you, there's probably questions.
Okay, all right.
I think that that's the way council wants to do it.
Okay, all right. So in the notes for discussion attachment, you'll see in there are three different options, and I am hoping I can get some feedback from council on the three different options. For the plan, to see, you know, what your appetite was on which one you liked or which one you didn't like, or do we need to go into a different direction? Do you want me to read each one out loud, or?
What do you guys want to do?
For the options?
So are we, are we sitting then, are you specifically talking about executive summary?
The executive summary, yeah.
So in the package, you gave us the existing, and then you gave us actually four options.
Yeah.
Alternatives.
That's right. Yeah, for a discussion.
You would like an idea of which one we preferred?
That would be helpful, yeah, or, or not. I mean, I've given those options for discussion based on some of the, the feedback we received. So I'm hoping we captured them in one of the options.
Okay, so from, from my point of view, I liked your option two, and I liked your option one. But if you had, were going to force me to choose one, I would choose option two over option one.
Option two.
But, I mean, there's, each one is slightly different, and so when I was reading them, through them, then I figured that's, you were probably hoping we would come back with some kind of. There's good things in all of them.
Right, okay.
That was the option I didn't see as all of the above.
Okay. So you're comfortable with all of them. Okay, all right. And the rest at council, was there one that you pervert over the other? Council McGee?
I also had number two as my first choice.
Okay.
I thought they were all well-written. I guess I would put it back in your own hands a little bit. Is there one you would prefer, you feel it would be easier to, get across already, you know, it's more, you've done some of this stuff, you know what I mean? And you know some of those key points that people like to.
Right, like to hear. I liked option two, it was a little shorter, a little more succinct, right? So I did like the option two that was generated. I found option three and option one were still a little bit too wordy, so option two was my preference.
And I don't like to throw it back at you. I know it's our document and things like that, we give you directions. So I just want to make that clear. Sorry, but I just, you know, you're in, been in the industry for a little while, so.
Okay, for sure. Is there any other further questions on, on that executive summary?
So I guess at, at the end of the day, through you, Mr. Chair, are you looking today for us to isolate down to a single option for you? Would that be your preference?
That would be my preference, so that when I bring it back, when we bring it back to the next council meeting, we can have it in a finished product.
Okay. So then the question for us is, are we prepared to settle on one of the options that's being provided? It actually took me a while to figure out where you're going with it.
Oh, sorry, okay.
And, and the reason for that was is because we had the, sort of that first copy that was in there, and then it wasn't until I got to the second copy with your options and notes on it that I finally include into what we're, where we're headed, so.
For sure. Yeah, so that's what we did. I included the initial draft of the plan, and then the notes for discussion based on what was discussed at the previous council meetings and committee of the whole. So are we all comfortable with option two?
I am.
Laura Lee has her hand up.
Council Cunningham.
Okay, I'll see how this goes. Just to option two, I do like that one. The only thing I think I would add to that, we're talking about adding beyond traditional sectors. I just don't want to discount still that we would always want to attract traditional sectors as well. So other than that, I really like that one, but I, I mean, if we had an egg dealership, let's say, that came and wanted to build in Neheil County, I don't think we would turn them away because it, you know, is traditional. So I just, I just don't want to discount the traditional, otherwise I do like number two as well.
All right. Okay, so I can make a statement to add that in for, for the next meeting. All right, can I proceed, or is there?
Any other questions?
So we're basically going with option two with just a tweak.
Tweak, yeah.
Okay, that means yes, you can pursue.
All right. All right, so the next item that was for discussion was in the goals, and one of them was on goal number one, which was to increase awareness and understanding of economic development principles for elected officials, senior staff, businesses, and residents. And if you'll see right below that green arrow, we just, I guess, broadened that statement, so we weren't so specific. We just said to increase awareness and understanding of economic development principles amongst internal and external stakeholders. So we didn't, we, we just made it more broad to kind of include everybody. So if everybody, there was some discussion around that in why we segregated, so we just thought we'd broaden it. So if there's no further questions or discussion on why we did that, let me know.
So, excuse me.
Reeve King.
Okay, so for just, the clarity is that instead of that initial statement that's there, we are now going to use the second state.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And then we made that same change with all of the goal ones on page 149 and 50, just so that it followed through the entire document. Everybody, all of council's okay with that change to that goal? And then the purpose on page four, we just kind of condensed it a little bit. We were a little bit more specific. So we did just some modifications to talk about the purpose of it, so hoping, oh, what happened? So we provided a new option there. Can we just scroll up just a little bit? Oh, here we go. Can't get it? Okay. Oh, there we go. Okay, can everybody read that one? So here we just, we just condensed it a little bit. We found it a little bit wordy, and we weren't really specific on what the purpose of the plan is. So we're stating now, the purpose of the plan is to provide a three-year strategic roadmap to guide the county towards sustainable economic growth. To accomplish this, we need long-term planning, collaborative solutions, and a commitment to investing in our community. The plan outlines actionable strategies and objectives aligned with the community's visions and aspirations, and the plan is a working document for administration to continually monitor progress, and will update the plan as we engage with businesses and as guiding update, documents are updated and as initiatives are brought forward for consideration. And the plan aligns with the county strategic plan, the 2019 municipal development plan, land use bylaws, and all through open engagement and with stakeholders, businesses, residents, and council. And through the plan, the county aims to build a resilient and diverse economy to enhance the livelihoods of its businesses and residents to position the county as an attractive destination for investment and growth. So that was just a, a more refined version of the purpose. Everybody's good, yeah?
Mr. Gannon.
Sorry, through the chair, there's one recommended correction I would do on that option right now. I do apologize if I didn't catch that earlier. As this being a working document, or with us continuously improving our documents to specifically indicate the 2019 municipal development plan, I believe in the purpose that we just put municipal development plan. As those plans change, adapt, and move, we want to make sure our economic development plan does the same.
Probably a good idea, seeing as there's a new one coming.
I can make that change? Okay, then we can basically fast-forward over to page 47. Unless there was other areas within there that council had further discussion on or questions. And so in, on page 47, that renewable, seek renewable energy opportunities was listed in the opportunity section, and then opposition from residents. So basically, we are removing those as directed by council. So I've done that with the new plan. So is there any other discussion on those?
Reeve King.
So in reading the existing and revised, if you go to your revised sheet and go down one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, to your 11th point where it says upgrade and invest municipal infrastructure, should we perhaps have the word in, upgrade and invest in municipal infrastructure?
Yes, I can add that.
And then if you go down to your threats box, point three, it says minimal lack of funding programs for businesses and property improvements. Just thinking perhaps there needs some clarity there, minimal lack of funding, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think she meant to write minimal and lack of funding.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wasn't, it just didn't read for me, so.
Laura, okay. Council Cunningham.
Thanks. Just one thing that I was looking at with the, on the threats, the residents desire to maintain agriculture heritage. The only thing that kind of confuses me a little bit about that one is if we look to our strategic plan, our vision statement says at the intersection of history and opportunity, it's a forward-looking community that celebrates its rural roots, and our mission is a rural community that embraces its agriculture lifestyle. And our values, tradition, we uphold and promote the unique agricultural history of Neheil County. So I'm just wondering, are we in a little bit of a conflict there, like we seem in one document, we're saying one thing, and then the other, we're kind of saying a different thing? Does that make sense?
Mr. Gannon.
Thank you through the chair. That's a, that's an excellent question. As we work through the working groups, one of the main conversations that we did have was that exact statement and the adjustment to that statement. We wanted to make sure that we're open to business for all, all industries and all sectors. So as we bring this document forward, I don't think we're in conflict because there are many things within that. But at the same time, we've taken the information that came from the working groups and, and council through those working groups to say, okay, there's a softer adjustment that we could make within this plan to ensure that all the industries were under the same envelope of, of attraction and support.
Council McGee.
I really see your point there, Laura Lee, and I really see the point, it clearly is a threat. And so I think we need to find a little bit different wording, something along the lines of residents' desire to maintain agricultural heritage and in this interpreting that as only agricultural development. So is the interpretation of that, that's the issue, not that that's what they value? So can we just change that wording, the interpret, and therefore the interpretation of wanting agriculture only?
Reeve King.
And I would say that we've seen that desire expressed in terms of the heritage that we've had and that we've maintained, and now that we're looking at potential other types of development, it always comes to the fact that doesn't necessarily align with what our residents see as fitting in with agriculture. And somehow we have to break that perception to help them understand that we have to be about more than just agriculture. And so how do we word it in a way that the heritage we have isn't a threat, but it's the absolute desire for ag only that becomes the threat? And so if we're going to propose a development in a community that's not seen anything like that in the past, if it becomes the, because it's not agriculture, we aren't going to do it, then we have a problem. And so somehow we have to be presenting the fact that Neheil County needs to move beyond just ag, and there are other industries that would suit to be in this area that aren't necessarily strictly ag-focused, but that we need to be attracting. And so I think I agree that perhaps the wording has to change a little bit, but the reality is, is what we see when those developments are proposed is an absolute pushback to say this is ag only. And we sort of set ourselves up in our strategic plan to reflect maybe some of that. And if I was rewriting a strategic plan, I would probably soften the emphasis on that ag preservation side.
I am, yeah.
Okay. Council Foles.
So if I look at the residents' desire, can we just take out the word residents? Because really, at the end of the day, it's just the desire to maintain agricultural heritage. We're not labeling it on one person then, we're not putting it on just the residents of this county because then it looks like we're, we're against what they would, they were wishing. And I don't want to have residents because I'm pinpointing a specific person, and we are not just residents that live here.
Okay, I can definitely remove that.
Okay, Council Cunningham, I'm sorry.
Yes, no, you're all good. So I'm just wondering, do we take that statement out altogether? Because, I mean, I, I've heard from people, the reason that they moved to Neheil County is because of our agriculture heritage. I think that second statement, concern over development having a negative impact on agriculture, to me, I think we've addressed that in that statement. I would really, I would really like to remove that first one because to me, agriculture heritage is important for us in Neheil County. That second statement does deal with agriculture. Like you said, the concerns that people do have over agriculture, so I, that's just my thoughts on that, if that makes any sense.
Council McGee.
different statement, because I do think the interpretation that agriculture only is a slightly different point. Yes, there's concern over negative impact on agriculture, but that isn't addressing the fact that the belief system is we should have only ag development. And I think that has been a threat. So maybe remove just that entire statement and just briefly state that.
Thank you through the chair. I know that some individuals that look at a SWOT analysis really concentrate on that word threat. And when they look at threat and they read the rest of it, it's becoming a personal statement versus a, an item that could be an obstacle for the initiation of the economic development plan or the individual goals and objectives of it. So we want to look at the understanding. We had to continue to use the words threat because it is a word that is used with a SWOT analysis. It actually is the word within the SWOT. So when we use these words and we look at that, I, I do understand that we look at residents' desire to maintain agriculture heritage. We know that there was, there's some significant feelings that, you know, we want to be, there's resistance to certain development if it affects the agriculture sector in any way. The second statement says concerns over developing having negative impact on agriculture. So there's one that says, there's, we look at the desire to maintain an agriculture heritage, but on the other side, we're looking at a negative impact on agriculture. So I'm, I'm okay with having one broad statement, but I think we need to understand that, as was expressed before in, in the purpose, it's for all industries. So if we can say that the, something within there, under the threat, that, that agriculture, the desire to maintain solely an agriculture heritage, it, it's just some of the information we received through the evaluations and information. It's, it's part of the analysis, and it's part of the information that came as the package. And we know that this is a potential obstacle as we move forward with any type of development within the county. So I'm not sure what the best wording would be for that, but I just wanted to give a little bit of a different look at it, that it, they are obstacles, they are concerns, and they are things that we're going to have to work with, within the plan if we're going to work with other sectors.
Counselor Phobes.
So if we're going to keep continuing, I will say that the only thing I would add is, is do the concern over development having negative impact on agricultural and its heritage. Problem solved.
Counselor McGee.
I think, I, I really hear what Counselor Cunningham is saying, and I think we need to take the word heritage right out of this discussion, because that is an established truth. That is to be honored and only spoken in that way. And though I understand what you're trying to say, Kevin, as a part, as, understanding what threats are, I still think that how we broke, use the vocabulary to address those threats really makes a difference in being heard well. And for me, agriculture heritage is not what we're talking about here. We're talking about wanting only ag development. So let's talk about development words, not heritage.
Reeve King. So I guess, I see where the, I see where the discussion's going, and, and I hear what you said, Mr. Gannon. And I agree, I think we need to maintain that first bullet, because we are talking about two different things. One is negative impact, and one is desire for perhaps ag-only. And so how do we, how do we clarify that? I guess that's up to the wordsmiths that are out there. But I think that we need to recognize that if we're just strictly ag-only focused, that's, that's potentially a problem for us. And then the other side is, how is that development, whatever it happens to be, going to have impact in terms of what we might perceive as a negative impact on agriculture? So I think somehow we need to maintain both of the, the points and just clarify exactly what we're saying within them. So the first one, and I think you said it first, Counselor McGee, about agriculture only, and remove the heritage part. And then the other one is how it impacts agriculture. So there's two sides. It's potentially seen as a threat because it might have a negative impact on agriculture, but it's also potentially seen as a threat because it's not agriculture. And that's very different, so.
So I can, do you just take it away and see how it can massage those two points and, and present in the next council meeting?
So I don't know how to bring this, or how to say this, but I'm going to take a stab at it. But there are actual agriculture operations that are looked at as threats now, through the ILOs and stuff. Not just specific ILOs, but if there is something that's agriculture-related, for whatever reason, it looks like it's a threat to agriculture in itself, which don't know how you mitigate that.
No, I hear what you're saying, yeah.
Counselor Christie.
That was my thought, sitting here, thinking about industrial agriculture versus agriculture. What's, what's the develop, what's the, what's the meaning of agriculture at the end of the day in this document? Like, because it's really diverse. When you look at, when I look at solar energy, I want the same agricultural production per acre as we had before that facility went in. My son challenged me a little bit with the one north of Three Hills. If that's alfalfa and managed properly with sheep, we're going to have trouble competing with the dollar values, if they do it right. And he broke it down to numbers, and I'm going, oh, maybe I got to look at this harder.
Mr. Gannon.
Thank you. Great questions, great conversation. I really do appreciate it. I believe the broad context of point two does capture that sentiment. It's concerns over development having a negative impact on agriculture. Agriculture development, we're not specifying any sector. It's all development. So I believe it does capture the essence of what you're trying to say without really pointing out that industry or that sector, because there could be other sectors that come in that could pose that same type of risk that you're talking about. So I, I believe it is captured in point two. As we massage that through, I, I believe that concern is there.
Well, someplace along the line, it has to be captured. And, I mean, yeah. I'm not trying to point fingers at what, what is good agriculture and what is perceived as bad agriculture, but there's a lot of things out there that are not looked at favorably.
And this is just a comment. It's funny, because we talk about how the consuming public, non-farm public, really doesn't understand agriculture. Sometimes within our own community, we really don't understand agriculture. And sometimes we, we, we almost discriminate against ourselves because someone takes a different approach to that and what we consider to be agriculture and traditional agriculture. And so we can be as discriminatory as what we consider to be the uneducated public who don't understand agriculture, period. So it's, it's, even within our, within our own industry, within our own community, sometimes we have a hard time understanding the desire of an operation to go in a different direction than any of us have ever gone before. And I think back to when we first started doing continuous cropping and direct seeding and leaving your stubble up. And, I mean, the first pioneers doing that were considered to be absolutely nuts. You know, like they, they don't understand how agriculture has to work here. And yet, thirty-five, forty years later, we're, we're all doing that, right? So sometimes we have to have the openness of mind to think that we are willing to accept something that's totally outside of traditional agriculture and, and allow it to happen, because it may be the future for what we all consider in forty years from now, so. Just a comment.
Counselor Christie.
The scary part is what happened in forty years is happening in four now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, accelerated.
Mr. Gannon.
Thank you. I just want to know if council wants us to capture that more directly, the changes in traditional farming versus innovative future solutions. I'm not sure what that, that would be, but if that is something within the farming industry that you feel is a threat for innovation and, and, and moving forward, is that something you'd like to capture more directly? Or do you believe point two would capture that effectively enough for you?
I think it is. I'm okay with it. Reeve King. I guess the only reason I made that comment is oftentimes we think it's the other guys, right? It's the other guys that have a problem, and, and we're good. And sometimes it's us guys that have the problem and that are standing in the way of that development from happening. And we always, we always tend to push the blame somewhere else, but sometimes it's, it's that community itself that's going, that's just not allowed, because we just have never done it before. And sometimes we just have to get out of the way and say, although we've never done it before, maybe now is the time, and, and we're going to do it. So we just can't always blame the other guy.
Right. So through the chair, would it be beneficial then to maybe add a statement kind of regarding what you've just indicated, up in the opportunity section, that we're going to seek those opportunities through some engagement? To find innovation opportunities or agricultural, you know, the opportunities for, you know, the, looking into the future development of agriculture within the county as an opportunity statement?
Go ahead. So maybe I should, I should point this one to Mr. Hogan, because, you know, the suggestion has been we have this sort of ag-focused, future vision kind of session where we bring in producers and we bring in other individuals to say, what is the future of agriculture? And, and how does that look? And, and I don't know whether the concept that he's presented to council would point us in that direction or not. So maybe that's a question I'd ask of Mr. Hogan. Do you see us maybe adding a comment like that, as Ms. Gabe, Gabe is suggesting or not?
So through, through, Mr. Chair, I think it's a tough question. It's a good question, but it's a tough one, because I think when you look at the document, you can put that, you can put a comment in there. It can be an opportunity, it can be a threat, it can be all sorts of things, because we don't know what it is. You go back to that innovation will threaten the status quo, but it might be better. It might, you know, there might, that challenge should theoretically bring new opportunities as well. And so that's where, that makes it a difficult question to really address, I think, in a document like this, is that you want to be, I don't think the, you know, the, the discussions from council, I haven't taken them to, to read that, you know, we're against that type of innovation. And some of those trends may be, may be forced on us. And to go back to that, that ag working group, or that, that economic development topic, that is what it's designed to try and suss out, is in terms of what do we see the future going? You know, we know that there's trends happening now. Do we expect those trends to continue? Because a lot of them will be beyond our ability to influence. You know, when we look at the, the rise of more industrial farming versus the family farm, that's been a trend that no single entity can, has been able to control, and that's probably been going on for a couple of decades at least. So that's one that we have to adapt to, not one that we can steer or control, right? And so when we do, when we look at that, that agrofutures or the, I forget the exact name that we put on it, the future, the focus on agriculture, it's designed to identify those trends so that we can turn them into opportunities, knowing that some of them we can't control. So I don't, you know, having said all that, I don't know that I've actually given you a good answer to your question, but it might be very difficult to identify for or against in here, because change, change brings threats, but it also brings opportunities.
Reeve King. Just following up. So Ms. Grant, I guess what I would say is that, I don't know if we can, maybe we leave it to your imagination to see if you can craft something like that that would sort of capture that thought, but I don't know how the rest of council feels about it, but certainly I might trust your wisdom as opposed to how that might get worded in there. And then if you want to bring that back to the next session, depending on whether council agrees or not.
Counselor McGee.
I believe your very first statement in opportunities probably addresses that. Maybe, do we need to expand that? But I think it already addresses this conversation.
So are we good with this, this part? Okay, sounds like we're good with this part. We'll leave it to your imagination.
All right, thank you. All right, so we will move forward to, I think we've already got, oh, right, on pages fifty to fifty-three, we just removed, or sorry, changed goals and tactics to goals and strategies. So we just changed the wording so that tactics didn't, wasn't really quite the right word, so we changed it to strategies. So if there's nothing against with us doing that, we should have caught that earlier, but we didn't. Now, I just wanted to bring back into discussion on year one, because we had quite a bit of discussion about what are we doing in year one, year two, year three. I don't necessarily like the way it's presented like this. I'd like to do it in a more of a formal Gantt chart, just so we can see progression of how we're going to accomplish the plan. But I did just break down some of the strategies as we were working through the budget process at this time to determine what items we were going to be asking budget for moving forward. So this was, you know, just kind of the best way to lay it out right now at that time, but now that we're a little further ahead with the budget process, I would lay it out in more of a Gantt chart. But we did just want council to see, not necessarily lay it out like this in the plan, but what we, what was going to be accomplished in year one, year two, and year three. Because I know there was a lot of discussion about that. So if you would like us in the plan to put it in a Gantt chart, we can definitely do that. I'm at a, we're at a more comfortable stage now that we know what we're doing for the years of the plan. Is that something that would be helpful?
Yes.
To show it through a Gantt chart? Okay. We will do that, and we'll align it with, with the budget process as well. Anything else on, on any of those strategies that have been listed in the goals, in the goals? Okay. All right. So then we get over to page fifty-four on the success measurement. Now, this one was, I think, probably the biggest part. Now, this one was, I think, probably the biggest part of discussion at the last meeting. And so, administration had just asked that I put together, uh, a little bit of a flow chart just on how we go through determining what, how we're going to measure the plan. So, I just showed a little bit of a, of a flow chart on how we create those success measurements as we create the initiatives through that budget process, right? So, the municipal development plan helps inform our strategies. That strategic plan goes between, or that alignment between the strat plan to inform those strategies, which then comes down to the economic development plan. And then annually, we put through the budget and we determine what those measurement outcomes will be, um, achieved through each of those initiatives brought forward in the budget. And then, they, those are submitted annually by administration and approved by council. We also went through a number.
Just before you, so this, this flow chart will end up in the economic development?
My plan was not to.
Okay.
But it was just more here for discussion.
Okay, because if it was, then I have a comment on some of the wording, but.
But if you would like it.
If it's not, no, I'm fine if it's not. I just, if it was going to end up there, then the second sentence, there's a sentence in there that we need to work on, so. But if it's not ending up in the plan, I have no problem with it as it is.
It was just more here for discussion so that we could provide some clarity on how we come up with a success measurement. We also went through a number of plans that are at kind of at the same level or maturity level of development as Neale County. So, we looked by population, we looked by years that they'd been undergoing investment attraction or that they've done business retention and expansion initiatives. And we looked at how they're measuring. And so, I had put, we had put together a number of examples or of key performance indicators that are in that existing plan and they actually do align with how they're already measuring. So, I don't know how much more detail you would prefer in the plan, but we couldn't really come up with, you know, any different measurements in which to measure the plan until we get more specific at the budgeting phase every year. So, when we look at each initiative, we can put solid numbers to them, like how many people do we plan on training based on those initiatives? So, we were kind of hoping through the success measurement right now to keep them broad as other, as other economic development plans do, and then more specific as we submit our annual plans and we prepare our project plans. And it was also difficult with statistics to be able to say we're gonna measure by statistics because we have no baseline of initiatives at this point. So, as those initiatives happen, then we can start to use our statistical information through Stats Canada to help measure how we're doing and the progress. So, at this point, you know, we're saying to, you know, we'll still build capacity, we'll measure that by training participation rate. So, how many people attended the training sessions that we've, that we're laying forward? Or number of people engaged in stakeholder sessions? For strengthening existing businesses, we'd look at a business retention rate. So, we, as, as we don't have a business license, it's really hard for us to monitor that, but we're gonna be looking at how we can capture that information and then we can measure that retention rate over time as we do engagement, right? Did any close or did any others start up or expand? We can measure those through business satisfaction surveys. So, as we do different initiatives, we can measure, how did that impact their business? How did that help them? And same with number of jobs, that one we can use employment rates for. So, we are able to pull statistical information from there. And then on enhancing investment readiness, uh, we would use that economic development toolkit. And you go through a scoring grid as we achieve the, um, I guess, the different states. We can re-grid it every year and we can determine if we're at a beginner, an advanced, or an intermediate state. So, we would use that toolkit as our guiding document to achieve readiness. And then on the investment attraction strategy completed, what we'd be looking at, what initiatives were completed and how did we do through those? And then in terms of brand awareness, we'd be looking at monitoring the website and social media analytics. And resident satisfaction, so, um, if there is a new resident satisfaction survey that goes out, we can look to measure through there. But we can also measure that through different initiatives that we do just to ask them through a survey. How did they find those initiatives? And then on population growth, well, we can definitely use that through stats information. So, if there, I don't know if you guys have additional, if counsel has additional questions or different additional ways that they wish for us to measure the plan. But that was what I was able to gather through other economic development plans at this maturity level on how they measure.
Mr. Gannon?
Uh, thank you through the chair. I just want to add one, uh, one addition to that. The strongest measurement we'll get is through the initiatives that we'll be proposing in the budgetary process. So, the actual projects that move forward, uh, as they move forward, we'll learn what council or what we feel are going to determine success within there and be able to put those measurements in there. As, uh, as the manager indicated, the, the different information statistical analysis that are available to us are dependent on some of these, uh, projects or potential initiatives moving forward so we can capture better analytics. Because some of the analytics we currently get are captured on a broad nature, right? We want more specific that relate specifically to the county and, uh, projects or programs that we're delivering, that we're doing and understanding the broader concept, but respecting the internal, uh, aspect and involvement of the community, uh, within Neale County. So, the plan really gives us the ability to go back and provide those projects for approval as counsel saw in some of the budget already, to be able to understand our market, understand the needs of our market, and really propose where we move forward in those business expansions, uh, and then further into innovation and attraction scenarios. But there's different levels of measuring that depending on those projects moving forward. So, the plan really gives us the roadmap to create those projects. And then when those projects come forward, we'll have a better measurement availability depending on how those projects are, um, developed and, and initiated.
That's it? Okay? All right. So, I'll continue just to keep those the same then. All right, that's fantastic. Thank you. All right, then we're at the final comment, which was the conclusion, and I did provide four options there. There was some sentiments in the prior meetings. Just felt that it needed to be a little bit more positive and just a little bit more enlightening. So, I'm hoping that one of those options there does encapsulate what counsel is seeking. So, I'm just looking for your feedback on any one or all of the options provided to you.
Reeve King?
Never being afraid to share an opinion, so, uh, I, again, I liked your option two. I thought it was fairly succinct. There were some trigger words in some of the other ones that I really didn't care for, particularly option three and four. So, um, I thought, in the end, I was quite comfortable with option two, but that's, that's my opinion. And I appreciate the fact that the two of you have gone to all the effort to give us that many options. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor McGee?
My thoughts exactly. We agree a hundred percent again.
Scary.
I'm still looking for option, option five.
None of the above.
Parts of all of the above.
Well, and that's true, there's good statements in.
I do like two, though.
He like, oh, he liked two.
Counselor Cunningham?
So, just a question I had on option number one. When it says Neale County has developed a plan that will identify prepare lands for investment attraction, I guess I'm just looking for a little bit of a definition of what prepare lands would be? Like, are we looking to, like, do, like, land prep and have, like, us be the developer? I guess I, I just want a little bit more clarification on what prepare lands means to the county.
Mr. Gannon?
Thank you through the chair. As we explore where the market, um, recommendations would be, there would be different initiatives and potential creating area structure plans. Currently, we are not in the business, as some municipalities may be, to really create those development areas. And, and that is preparing the lands, uh, through governance, uh, more than, uh, physically scraping the land down and making it ready for, uh, people to build. So, we're, we're looking at, uh, looking at where those growth centers are and preparation of land is more on a governance standpoint versus actually doing physical work. It can include, I, I must say, it can include having utilities or infrastructure brought to the property for investment purposes. So, that's, that's part of a preparation aspect. So, even though we're not preparing the land that potentially is going to be developed, we are preparing through infrastructure and, and growth to potentially bring that infrastructure there to initiate development as well as the governance. So, I hope that answers your question, Counselor Cunningham.
Okay, any questions? Comments, concerns, ideas? Wade, number five?
I have no ideas. I guess for me to designate land, um, administrated valley to attract a developer would be my priority, not to be, actually be the developer. I'm just thinking about some of the land that we farm at the river where it had a really intensive network of power. It has nothing now. It's all gone. They came in and, and basically brushed the power lines so they could get in and take it out. So, if you develop a property somewhere, we've got to really watch the services that are going by to make sure that they're long-term and not disappearing. Because it kind of shocked me how much three-phase stuff is just gone. Then, if you wanted to develop in that area now, you're bringing three-phase power for four or five miles, that's huge cost.
Reeve King? So, I guess when we're talking about preparing land for future investments, um, I guess in my mind, that means that we have to be open to the possibility that either a developer could come in and say, I want to do X on a piece of land. And are we prepared to consider that and to allow that to happen within our economic development plan? And/or are we prepared to consider at some point in the future, if it made sense, that Neale County would actually be the one that would develop and prepare land for future investment? So, I think we have to leave the door open. I think we have to be prepared to allow, um, developers to come in who have ideas and thoughts about how that might look and be prepared to be receptive to those ideas. And if in the future, it looked like it was more appropriate that Neale County be that developer, if that's the term that we want to use, we would be open to that as well if it made sense and was economically feasible to do that. I look at our neighbor directly to the east of us who's taken what I consider to be a really bold step at the junction of number nine and, and, uh, what is it, fifty-six and twenty-seven, where they are developing because they see that as, um, a way for them to diversify the economy that they have. If we were in a similar situation and it made sense for us to do that, would we consider that? I think we can't close that door. But at the same time, if somebody else came along and said, I want to take this quarter section and my plan is to develop a gasoline alley in Neale County, you know, number nine and twenty-one or whatever that happens to be, would we be open to that? I hope the answer's yes. And so, who does it make sense for? Does it make sense for that developer to do that or does it make sense for Neale County to do that? And when the opportunity comes in the future, at least is our minds open and the door open enough to consider that as a possibility? That would be the question that I have. And I think having that wording in there allows the opportunity for it to either be somebody else to prepare that or potentially ourselves sometime in the future.
Mr. Gannon?
Uh, thank you through the chair. I, I do appreciate all the comments and I do concur that there is that opportunity. I was just looking on the framework of three years of how much work we have to do to be ready. Should an opportunity come available like that, definitely, I, I think that the wording within the plan would give us that opportunity, that insight from, from counsel to bring that forward for consideration. But I think there's other innovation and other factors within the plan that also highlight that to ensure that we can bring that forward for that consideration. So, uh, the Reeve is absolutely correct on that. We've seen other communities that have created their own business parks and have spurred innovative growth in areas and invested in those areas by being the developer themselves and then contracting out that, that work. I'm not sure we're there yet, but any opportunity coming forward, should that be an opportunity, the plan would clearly indicate that we could bring that for consideration and that counsel's open to those options.
So, would we also, well, I guess you don't put that in this plan, but we would also be half, we'd also have to be cognizant of taxation incentives. Because using Reeve King's example, there may be incentives on the south side of the nine that we can't compete with or we have to do better than what the south side of the nine does. Go ahead, Mr. Gannon.
Uh, thank you very much. I believe the plan is broad enough to, when we're looking at innovation or attraction, those attraction strategies will be brought back to counsel for consideration should it be an investment model of what, what type of risk or tolerance counsel would look at. That would be part of those projects that would be coming back to counsel for consideration so we have an idea and great, and can create some governance processes for that attraction and those opportunities.
Okay, thank you.
I was just, just before you spoke, I had my hand up. It's okay. I wanted to talk about the tax break too because those are, to me, includes preparing land. It sounds like we're going to be doing the landscaping and, you know, if somebody reads that, that, that's not just what we're going, we're, you know, we're not necessarily prepared to do that, we're prepared to work with the development on different scenarios when the time comes. So, I wanted to make sure, because that's, to me, we have multiple locations in the county that there could be a development done. And so, I, I would hate to have that come forward to me. I would prefer to see us give a tax. I would prefer to see us give a tax break or a tax holiday or some kind of wording to developers. I, I love development, but to put a lot of money in one area and for it not to go ahead, you know, I, I have a problem with that. But I see after we've had a discussion here with Mr. Gannon too, saying preparing the land doesn't necessarily mean we're doing the dirt work and that kind of stuff, so.
Would maybe through the chair to Counselor Penner going from includes, you know, preparing land could be positioning? Swapping, you know, that word out so that it's positioning us to be ready for future investments?
And does positioning mean that we've had good discussions here? There's options that council is prepared to look at? I'm not sure how to word that, sorry.
Mr. Gannon.
Thank you through the chair. I, I think both words are broad enough in nature that it can encompass as much as council wants to as those initiatives come forward. I, I really don't want to narrow that gap on a visionary document. I want to broaden that and then create those opportunities for discussion and bring them back for council. So I, I believe the word preparing is sufficient because there's, there's different levels of investment depending on that preparation and depending on that opportunity. Because every opportunity could have different obstacles and different opportunities that can come forward. If we make it very narrow, it might limit our opportunity at looking at those opportunities moving forward. We also want to understand that this document is an out-facing document. As investors look at us as a community, they will be pulling these documents. They will be looking at what we are. So they're very aware of what these documents could say. If we narrow that gap, it might lessen the opportunities as well.
So leave everything on the table.
Through the chair, I, I believe, I believe that is a good strategy and that we bring things forward to council for consideration through projects and through the different opportunities that come forward. Being open for business is, is how we really looked at this document and really tried to portray that we're open for business in all sectors and all opportunities and will explore every opportunity with our council to ensure that we're hitting those visionary tracks, which you guys want us to move forward on. So we're really looking forward to this document being finished and initiating and seeing how we can move forward with it.
Counselor Cunningham.
So, yeah, I think Counselor Penner kind of hit on a little bit of what I was aiming for there. And I, Ms. Brandt, I do like your word positioning. I guess I'm just still looking to the wording here. The plan lays out a strategic approach. I know, Mr. Gannon, you mentioned, I'm not, there was a portion that you said, we're not sure we're there yet. So within this, do we have the strategic plan outlaid somewhere within this document? That's just one thing I'm curious about. Because if it's something we're looking at, but we're not there yet, I, I just would like to see where this, where their strategic approach is in this document, if you could point me to that, if that makes sense.
Mr. Gannon.
Thank you through the chair to Counselor Cunningham's question. The, the plan and the different goals and strategies, I, I believe, give us that framework or that, that structure. We're going to go out there and we're going to look at where those sectors are. We're going to look at where those markets are to create a better opportunity. One thing that we've learned is that opportunities come to our door regularly. It's, it's some of the competitive nature of our surrounding communities on if we're going to be selected or not. And as we learn more from those items and we create a better inventory, understanding the infrastructure growth or if we look at area structure plans, those are all kind of laid there, looking at our land inventory, looking at those analysis and those strategic type of items within this plan to get us where we need to. Could somebody come to our door tomorrow and say that we want to do this in this area? We'll definitely put every effort we can into those opportunities. Because sometimes they just come to our door and, and we really appreciate when they do. But the plan has been developed and worked on in a way to, to create that, that structure and that, that analysis that's required to advise council. So council could say, do we want to put the investment in this area? Do we want to put the investment in that area? Do we, do we want to put an ASP over here? Do we want to look at restructuring and put in, in investment of utilities over here to spur growth? Some of those things will be coming back through this plan to council for consideration through, through the different strategies and goals.
Oh, Mr. Hogan.
Dear Mr. Chair, to build on what Mr. Gannon said, I think the idea behind that is that we want to make sure that we're, the steps that we're taking, that there's an order to them, that there's a structure to them. So we're not running out to do something without the foundations of saying why we're doing it. And that's the, that's what the plan is outlining over the next three years. There's foundational pieces we need to put in place so the next steps can be taken. And then that ties back into the, the other discussion around the preparing, positioning land or anything like that. I think that the key that's been highlighted by Mr. Gannon and others is that the county is open. What might make sense in one part of the county might, might not make sense in another part of the county. But the reality is we're not closed off to exploring those opportunities. So if it's, you know, I understand that preparing may have connotations in an outward-facing document that we don't necessarily want. But positioning could include the base, you know, from where minimal county involvement to full-on, the county's the developer. Nothing's off the table. I think that's what it's outlining is that, that. But those, what this document really says is that we're open to that discussion. The actual details of that discussion take place with council on the day when we're, when we're looking at that. Does that make sense on this day in this instance?
Yes, go ahead. Ms. Brandt.
Through the chair, I actually just pulled up the definition of prepare. And I think using the word preparation is fine, but it means to make ready for use or consideration. So I, I think it, it fits, but I just thought I'd bring that forward.
Counselor McGee.
Oh, sorry, I didn't turn my mic. I was thinking the same thing. I looked up the definition. But I still think the definition is sound. We're expecting the reader to have a sound understanding of the definition. And it is a hot-button word. So in my opinion, I'd like to still find something, a different word there that says the same thing. The first one I come across is fashioning, but I think there's many other ones, but something that's a little more. I don't know. I think you hear me.
Mr. Gannon.
Thank you through the chair. So in order to move forward appropriately, is council, are you okay with option two? And with us coming back with different wordsmithing for the word preparing or phrasing that in a different way? And then we can bring that back? And should, when we come to council for approval of the document, we can have it approved as amended? That way that we can put that, that clarification or that, that, that opportunity preparedness, whatever the, the change in wording council should choose at that time?
Are we actually approving land or are we approving policies to allow development on lands? Just throwing it out there.
Could be both.
He's going to have a hard time saying, okay, we can do it over here, but not over there. Reeve King.
I guess in my mind, we want the document to be broad enough that anything possibly might go. And we want to be broad enough in our own thinking to think that it could be possible that it's us that's doing this. Doesn't have to be, won't necessarily be. But if the right circumstances fell into line, are we open enough to consider that? That it could be us? And, and I hope the answer is yes. We would prefer that somebody else would take that burden themselves. But if it wasn't, if it became necessary for us to consider doing that, would we be prepared to move forward? And, you know, I hope the answer is yes based on the circumstance. And we would have to evaluate it at the time to see if that made good sense for us. But I don't think we want to close the door in any way to a possibility that might be worth considering going forward. And so whatever it is, policies or actual preparation or whatever it happens to be at the time and in the circumstance, what's right for us to decide? Fortunately, we don't have to make that decision today.
Well, saying no is never the right answer. Learned that from a few years of marriage.
I'm not going there, but I, I would, I would say if you want my feedback, I'm 100% okay with option two. And if you want a wordsmith preparing in a way that just phrases it slightly different, that doesn't sound like tomorrow we're out there with buggies and backos, then, then I think I'm good.
Okay, I've been requested for a recess. So what do we need?
Ten minutes.
Back at, back at, okay, 9:54.
Eight minutes.
All right. So thank you. All right. So we've got all of the feedback based on the changes that were presented from previous meetings. Is there anything else in the plan for further discussion or question or clarification at this time?
Could you just give a brief description on?
Could you just give a brief description on what SMART goals are for the people that are listening? Because I did get a question the other day on this. And I said I would ask to see just a quick, brief description of what that entails.
Okay. So through the chair to Counselor Phobes. So SMART is specific, measurable, actionable, realistic, and time. So when we create those SMART goals, we're looking at them to make sure that through the strategies we create and the tactics that they're very specific, we're doing them within a timeline that can be achieved and that we can actually do them. And then we're measuring them against the measurable indicators that we've indicated in the plan.
Okay, any closing comments? Not that they have to be closing comments, but any questions? Any, anybody want anything delved at deeper? Looks like you're kind of off the hook. You got, oh, Counselor McGee.
Sorry, I forgot the mic. See that we had a motion recommended? Are we ready? I'm willing to make that if we're ready for that.
Well, that's what I was trying to find out, if we were good to go ahead with that, so. Anyone care?
Great. I'm very excited that we have this plan underway. It's very well done and well presented. I like the layout. I like the vocabulary. You've done an excellent job, ladies. Thank you so much. Therefore, I'd like to motion to accept the economic development plan with the recommended changes and bring fo, oh, sorry, let me say that again. I'm going to read it the way it says. Motion to accept the economic development plan for information and bring forward the changes discussed to counsel for approval. My apologies, Carolyn.
So do we have a recommendation to take to council? Is that how we start this one or we just good with the way? Reeve King.
So I think that, um, yeah. We make that slight adjustment in Counselor McGee's motion. But I do want to also say thank you, Ms. Kester and Ms. Brandt, for all the work that's gone into this and for doing your best to reflect our thoughts from the last time. It is greatly appreciated. And I look forward to what you have for us coming back to council.
Thank you.
So is that how you'd like to see your motion, Counselor McGee?
That's fantastic. Exactly. Interpretation of my brain is very good.
All righty. Any discussion to that motion? I, yes, Counselor Christie.
Just a comment that I really like what, what we have, so thank you.
Okay, if they're, oh, Counselor Cunningham.
Sorry, I have to be the pain here. Can we just for one second go to the success milestones, year one, two, and three? I just want to make sure we've still got, um, still have this part under review. So I've got for year three, available land and updated development processes. Is that, is that still where we're at with that?
Sorry, under year one to establish baseline metrics, is that?
Yeah. So, so year three, we still have available land and updated development processes. That's still where we're at with that?
Yes, by the end of year three, the goal would be to have the lands identified and available, ready to proceed for attraction.
Okay, so I guess, I guess my question would be, I find three years a little bit far out for that. And then I just would like a little bit of clarification on updated development process because I see in year two, we've got updated land use bylaws. So what would be some clarification on what would form that updated development processes piece?
Mr. Gannon.
Uh, thank you through the chair to answer Counselor Cunningham's question. The collaboration that's going to be required through our economic development department and as the new municipal development plan gets approved, the next step is going through our land use bylaw process. So as we move forward with that, we'll understand some of the triggers or some of the responses that will be required and try to marry those two plans together and create those development opportunities. How do we track, how, what is the process to do that? Which is some of the conversations that's actually already happening in the background. How do we facilitate those conversations and who handles the file? Where does it go to? When does it come to council? Those, those things are going to be incorporated as the land use bylaw comes in and really understand where that forward focus is going to be. Did I answer that question, Counselor Cunningham?
Um, so I guess just in terms of available land, like I, I'm just trying to go back in my memory here. And I, I think at one time, uh, maybe about three years ago, there was, I think we did have some kind of a land inventory, which I know would be a little bit outdated. I, I'm just curious about waiting three years to identify available land. Um, and then I, yeah, I, I guess, I, yeah, I guess you did provide some. I just wasn't sure what was all included in that updated development process piece if we're doing the land use update in year two. That could be a me problem, not a you problem.
No, it, I don't, it's not to say that it won't be ready before then, but by, by the end of year three, like going through that investment readiness process, we could be year two and we could be ready, right? It just depends on where we are going through that process. So I think year three, we're saying the big vision is we are ready for investment for sure by year three. But I don't want to say that we won't be ready by year two. There could be an opportunity that comes forward that puts us in that position. So I think when we are looking at this, we are looking at going through that readiness process, that if it did take us three years, that's where we would be. Year three, we're ready to hit with readiness.
Mr. Gannon.
Uh, thank you through the chair. Uh, I'd just like to add on to the manager's explanation there is this is when, if through all different scenarios, this is the worst case scenario of when this is going to come forward. We're hoping depending on the, the projects get approved and the amount of information we receive. If we're able to move quicker on the items because of capacity or the information's coming forward, we'll definitely move forward on it as quickly as we can. And we'll be able to advise council through those processes as you see those budgets coming forward and as you see our updates. The one thing that we do recognize is that we do have information. But a, as you've indicated, Counselor Cunningham, it is outdated. And we need to find out what's accurate and what's inaccurate within that data set to really understand where we move forward to, what additional effort we need to do to capture it. So if we find out that the information is quite accurate, then we can move quicker on it. If it's not, we may have to put additional efforts forward to, uh, to get a better understanding of today's environment.
Okay, are we good? Any more discussion? We do have a motion before us. Okay, well, I guess if there is nothing else, I shall call the question. Motion reads, committee of the whole recommend to council to accept the economic development plan as amended. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much, Ms. Kester, Ms. Brandt. We told you that we would get you into a meeting, so I'm glad that it happened. So thank you very much for all the hard work.
All right, thank you.
For finding four options and having three of them dismissed kind of sucks, but. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next agenda item, two point three, rear in review, year in review template. Who's doing this one? He's trying to find it. Mr. Hogan.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. One of the things that council previously discussed was a year in review document or communication tool that would go to residents that would kind of highlight what the, what the county's been up to in the, in the preceding year. And this could be part of an entire year end package or part of the state of the county. Could be used in a couple of different formats. What we've done is we've prepared one as a, and as, and as an example, utilizing the 2023 data. So what we're, what we're bringing this forward to committee of the whole for feedback on is not necessarily the data from 2023, but the template of the report. What do you like about it? What do you not like? What would make it better? What's good to give us that feedback so that we can finalize, say, a template? And then put that out, you know, formally as part of the 2024 year end. And what we're envisioning is that that would come out usually in the springtime, kind of in conjunction with the financial statements. So you get, here's financially how it looks. Here's the other stuff, most, you know, more of it non-financial. But it's all part of kind of a year end package. So if, if council likes this, we, we could also upload this onto our website and have it sitting there. We wouldn't send it out there with fireworks or fanfare right now because it's October. But the, like I said, we wanted to put some actual data into there to give more of the feel for it. But really what we're looking for is do you, you know, obviously the colors and pictures are going to change year to year and some of those stylistic choices are going to change. But do you like the document? Is it, does it feed, feed the purpose of what we're looking to, what we're looking to communicate out? And so we're just looking for that feedback so that we can get to a, move towards a more finalized template that we'll officially informally use to report in the 2024 year.
Counselor Phobes.
I do like the layout of most of this. I've just always come back to we have a budget for 2023. When the numbers come in at the end, whenever they come in, I would like to see the actuals of 2023 on here as well. It just allows people to understand that, no, you're not overspending here. It just gives another tool for the public to see what we're learning as a counselor as well with administration support.
Counselor McGee.
When you say actuals, can you define that a bit? Because I panic into who's driving the greater point of view. And so I don't want to know how much is office supplies, just.
No, no.
To me, the expenses listed are already actuals enough, the headings of what each of those things come under. So could you clarify for me?
Sure. So in 2023, um, under operating budget for council, for example, the contracted and general services say we're budgeting 191,100. What of that did we actually use? Yes. I'm just looking for what you used in that line item for that year.
Reeve King.
So first question would be, Mr. Hogan, when, when is your thought that this would go out?
So our current thought is that this would go out in conjunction with, around the same time as the audited financial statements. So depending on where council wants to go with that, is that information is available both in the audited financial statements and in the fourth quarter variance report that would precede it? So it's really how, how much time do you, do you want to replicate it here or not?
Okay, so I'm, I'm just following Counselor Phobes' point. So if this goes out at the same time as we have an audited financial statement, could we, and we're talking the 24 year, could we show the 24 budget and the 24 actual? Rather than a 23 budget and a 24 budget? Could we, and, because if we have audited financial statements at that point, we should potentially have actuals for the year end, correct or not? And then the variance could be the difference between what we budgeted and where we ended up. And then we could explain those variances as we have tried in the verbiage here. And, oh, that's why I was just looking for that timing question.
Yep, that's exactly what I want to emphasize. What's the difference in time and when this could be released based on that? Very specifically, when does the audit happen? So when could this report be ready as opposed to doing it prior to audit?
Yeah, that's, that, you know, so that information, like I said, it's available on a couple of other sources. So to tie it into here, I don't feel like, as long as we're good with that timing, I don't feel would be a huge, a huge concern. Likely we'd be taking it really from the fourth quarter variance report.
So can you spell out the timing for me?
So what we're looking at generally year, well, barring needing an exception, barring needing an, an extension or anything like that, your year end financial statements are due May 1st. So you'd be really looking in that springtime, in that spring area, that April timeframe, depending on when council approve the financial statements.
Reeve King.
So, yeah, so if, if the vision for this document, year in review, is that it coincides with the audited financial statements and the approval by council, then I would say that it, it shouldn't be, I don't know, I better not decide how difficult it's going to be for you to provide that information. But it shouldn't be impossible for us to see what we budgeted for 2024 and what we actually spent by these categories. And then use the variance number just to show the difference between budget and actual. And then the explanation on expenses or income or whatever would then relate to why there's differences. And usually it's a good news story, so it's nothing ever to be afraid of, so.
Okay, any other comments?
Quick comment.
Go ahead, Counselor Penner.
I love the layout of it and it just shows that we, we have nothing to hide. It's all upfront, so I love it.
If, if, if I may, I think one of the goals in the document too that we're trying to do by the success measurements and stuff like that is you always get the question like, what are they doing in the office or the shop? Or what, what functions are actually going on day to day? You know, this by no means is an exhaustive list, but it starts to give an idea.
Yeah, as long as we do a good job on, you know, reconciling why there's a over, overpayment or not an overpayment, but a over, over the budget or under the budget. I mean, sometimes there's projects that aren't completed and they're pushed to the next year. Yeah. And sometimes, like Counselor Penner mentioned, stuff happens and you end up over budget.
And we can, we can take, like I said, the note that I've taken out of the discussion is to, to rather than focusing year over year, to focus in year, right? To the, to the year in question. I'm anticipating that there's going to be some, some tweaks or a little bit of change that we come forward with in, in future years just as we look at even the way we present our year end financial statements. Is there maybe changes that trigger out of that too? So as long as we know the broad, the broad goal that we're looking for, like I said, it's not locked in stone year over year. But really what, what I'm hearing is that we're, from council's perspective, we're on the right track.
So ultimately you do not need a motion, you just needed the direction, or do you need a motion?
I think if the committee of the whole just accepted this for information, we've got the feedback we need to make the, to make a few tweaks as we go into 2024. got the feedback we need to make the to make a few tweaks as we go into 2024. So what administration's intent would be is not to go back and redo this document that you see here, because we're not releasing it for 2023 formally. We can put this on our website, so it'll it'll just be a bit different looking in 2024 with that change in the financial stuff. So we'll throw this on the website because it is enough of a finished product and it does demonstrate some 2023 successes. We but we have the feedback to amend. We'll make that budgeting change for 2024, and you'll see that come out around the same time as the financial statements.
Sounds good. Is there any more input into this document? Pretty intense, you could just about make a book out of it. Councilor Penner.
I'd like to make the motion that the committee of the whole received the Neahill County annual reports for 2023 for information.
Okay. So we have a motion. Is there any discussion to that motion? Okay.
I like that amendment. Thank you.
Okay, so you like that motion the way it reads. Committee of the whole received the 2023 year in review for information. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously, I believe. You're zipping right along here. A 2.4 youth scholarship. Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item has been brought back at the request of council. And so this item was intended to come forward at a committee of the hall as per direction. And really what the focus of it is, we ask an essay question every year as part of our youth scholarships that we give out. So the people, the youths applying for that grant are required to submit a short essay on to a question of that we choose each year, we being the the county. So the question that we put out this year if was what are the challenges and opportunities for youth participation in county decisions and public engagements? What barriers do young people face? And how can these obstacles be addressed to enhance their involvement? So that was the essay question that we asked youth to give us some feedback on. The in going through the essays, I've listed them in the RFD, so I won't go through them verbatim here. But the there are some common themes that emerged or statements that emerged. So the entirety of the essays are included in the item, which the chair council has seen. We went through and picked out some of the main bullet points. And I believe the the intent is for the committee of the whole to take this information, start discussing it and see what you might want to do with it in terms of we've asked youths for this feedback, and we've asked the youth for this feedback. Now that we've got the feedback, what are we doing with it?
Councilor Foles.
Do we currently have any mentorship programs that engage our youth?
Through through Mr. Chair, I'm going to say sort of. And what I mean by that is the answer is probably more towards nothing formalized in terms of there, you know, in the past that we participated in, say, the RAP program in the shop or but that's not necessarily our program, right? So those types of things that that we take on, you know, I don't know that I wouldn't count, I wouldn't count the municipal internship as part of that. We do take part in career days and stuff like that. But again, those are, you know, career days, career fairs, that type of thing. We have, we are in, in, I think, discussion, be the right word, or contact with an entity that we have a number of high school students coming into the building later this year to talk about careers, right? So they're they're doing a different series. So one one time they're looking at trades, one time they're looking at professionals, that sort of thing. So when they do the professionals, one, we're looking at hosting them here. And then we'll have a number of our staff talk to them about career paths and career opportunities in local government. Do we have something existing that's very formal for youth mentorship at the county? I'd say the answer to that is is more no at this time.
Well, I'm glad you're working together with that group to bring them into the building because I think it's important. You can talk about it, but talking about it here is way better than talking about it someplace else.
Yeah. And what we're what we're in discussions of is the the group was looking for funding for to bus the students and the students are bringing, we're required to bring their own lunches and stuff like that. I believe what we're proposing is we'll host them here, we'll have our staff talk about it, we're taking part in it, and the county will provide pizza and pop for lunch. So the students don't have to do that. We're just having, we're in that process right now, so I don't know that that's a done deal yet.
That we're still in.
Yeah. So still being finalized, so it's not quite a done deal yet.
Councilor McGee.
So love that idea. I'm very excited about that. Are we looking to discuss ideas of where we want to go from here or what is our discussion points now? Because I have ideas.
Well, I think I'll let Mr. Hogan answer that.
So I think I think in terms of what we're doing with this, I think having those ideas come out would be good. As council recall, one of the goals that you set for 2025 is the development of a youth engagement program, right? So if you have those ideas, then obviously we want to look at them because what we're looking at in the 2025 year is a lot of these things that we do are going to require resource inputs and trying to figure out what resources are required. Do we have them? Do we need them? Is all going to be part of putting together a whole package, right? You know, I use the example of youth councils, and this is not a, you know, could we develop a youth council? We could. Lots of other places have done it. We don't need to reinvent that wheel. We just need to make sure the wheel fits in Neahill, right? So we can tweak that. But then you get into questions around how does that actually function? Do we have one? When does it occur? How does it combine with the students? If we're targeting students that don't have driver's licenses, is that a barrier to make them all come here? Or do we need several of them around the county, right? So we get into those discussions later based on what we want to come up. So if those ideas are out there, then at least it allows us to start exploring them and figuring out how they could how they could be delivered or what the challenges are, right? You know, if we had a couple of youth councils, say, you know, well, more than a couple, but if we had one here and one in Acme and one in Trosu, we're not requiring those students to drive to another area, right? Although if we do that, we're also not requiring those students necessarily get a viewpoint beyond just their sole community, right? So it doesn't necessarily give the essence of what you guys have to do where you're not just considering the Acme community or the Trosu community, it's the county, right? So it takes time to sort through that stuff, but as if we get the ideas out there, we can start that.
Okay, Councilor Foles.
When I reread one of the letters and it was stating that they don't always feel like they're heard, I would like to disagree with one of those statements because when we were holding our waste management, the youth did speak. I heard them very clearly when they were up there speaking to us as council in regards to the effects that may happen to them on their lands. So I do engage that part.
Councilor McGee.
Okay, I'm throwing one idea out. I believe we're at such a fresh starting point here about how to build, and that means building relationships, first building connection, building relationships, and therefore building trust. So though we did that, there's enough out there that don't have the trust that we are. And so how do we create that? And for me, we create it by meeting them where they're at. They're at social media. They love engaging in social media. Could we start a youth media committee that makes a plan and sets up how social media is used by Neahill County? To give us to to highlight information, so whether it's Instagram and then then, for example, this particular piece of the agenda is very pertinent to them. That would be something that be gone on Instagram. Notice at council meeting, we are going to be discussing da, 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 da. Or maybe notice that there will be a public hearing on blah, blah, blah. Do you want to, we youth are welcome to participate. So but have that formulated and done by youth, which can partly be done in person and through, again, teams or that type of way. I think that, and I see this coming under your communication and administration department, but the logistics of how to make that funded and work. But to me, that would be a great starting part because it's their, it's their culture.
Reeve King.
So I don't object to the idea at all, but anything that I've ever taken in terms of training around interactions, especially on social media, is if we are going to set up a site for youth to interact related to Neahill County, then we need to have clearly outlined rules of engagement. And we need to be firm on those rules. And we need to keep them in front of the participants. So if they start to behave in ways that are unacceptable within that community, then we have to be, somebody has to be prepared to enforce the rules and to keep the conversation positive. My biggest problem with social media has always been the fact that it degrades to a less than acceptable level. So I have no problem with the concept of using social social media to keep our youth informed and engaged and in a conversation. But we need to have clearly outlined rules and we need to be firm about what those rules are, and we need to keep them constantly in front of the participants.
Councilor Penner.
So for me, social media for sure. And I think anything when we, our name, Neahill County, is at the bottom of any of this stuff. So we've got to make sure that it is done correctly. And for me, it would be it would be going through our own communication department before it is actually posted on a site. There has to be some kind of review done that it is approved somehow. They're bringing the ideas to our communication departments, and then they can be put on the site, no problem. That's my view anyhow, because social media can go sideways very quickly, and that's not what we want.
I would agree, there needs to be some sort of filter. Not that we want to be the filter, but on the other hand, somebody has to be a filter. Councilor McGee.
I agree with that fully, and that was within the vision that I had. I believe whatever we set up, we're going to have to have some code of conduct guidelines. I think that goes with any type of committee we we form. It's an extension of us, and it is to to be clear that they that they are representing what we're doing here and that our staff or whether we even have council mentors occasionally meet with them as well. But I think this is a great way to instill that civic responsibility for positive communication, the civic responsibility to be engaged in a way that, and the truth is, the majority of youth want that. They want those rules, they want those opportunities. Fearing the odd ones that don't get it is not a reason to be too hesitant. I think we need to trust that as we build trust with them, they will take off and be as great as we are.
Councilor Christie.
Part of the reason the RAP program works really well is is kids can get a lot of credits. Is there something in the school system in political sciences or something that we can work with the school system to to enhance their credit system to attract those kids? I don't know what what's out there for that part of it. Do we need to approach the school and say, what have you got? What can we help you help you with?
Transportation could be an issue.
Schools got buses.
Well, even some of the kids on the RAP program and everything else, sorry, just jumped in, they have to get their way to the program, right? They work it out themselves if they're interested in taking this. To me, when I look back at this, like, youth are often excluded from decision making. I don't, how are we excluding them? It's out there. I think it's a parenting thing. The parents haven't made this aware to their children. Children in the high school, to me, they are busy doing the sports, they're busy doing their the RAP programs, they're busy doing some, and they don't hear or see what's going on unless it is at the kitchen table or the supper table or through a guidance officer at the school. So I throw some of this back at the kids, and maybe when they're in the building here, if there is an opportunity, that some of this is brought up to them. Like, some ideas might come out of a quick little discussion, if there is time, to ask some of these things, like you got, you guys feel that you're not included and and that, you know, there's a lack of awareness and interest in some of the stuff that's going on. So I maybe that's an opportunity to throw it back at them. But to me, I think the kids are very busy in those years, busy playing sport, being young adults in the apprenticeship program now that you can get credits for almost anything. They are busy. So unless a parent brings it to their attention, it's not bought up. So maybe we have to educate our parents in our newsletter. I don't, you know, by asking a few questions, just a little tiny little blurb or something, are your are your children interested? Please have them contact a council or the office.
Reeve King.
So Councilor Christie referred to it and Councilor Penner did too. Councilor Christie said you, what are the schools doing and how can we interact? And Councilor Penner, you said you can get credit for anything. So if we're going to build a platform like this and use it to interact with students, is there a way, like we have said, that we could integrate this into the school and part of their programming and use it to ask questions from Neahill County to the students to say, we want your feedback? And and as part of their school experience, it becomes they get engaged in this process. So if they can get credit for anything and we can partner with the schools, perhaps there's a way that it can be a more productive forum than just a conversation forum.
Go ahead, Councilor Penner.
I'm sure, you know, there are some students that don't choose to play sport and do that kind of stuff. They can get credit through social media designing and whatnot else or participating. It depends on the teachers. It's goes right back to the teachers, but they've got to be prepared to assist in this whole, it's not just up to us. They have to give approval and sign off on it and things like that.
Councilor Cunningham.
Councilor Cunningham. So I agree with everyone's point, some great ideas. Social media is a tricky thing, but like or dislike it, it's part of the world and it's going to be part of youth's world for a long time. So I wonder if we can meet them where we're where they're at. So maybe on some of our, I'm not sure, I know we have Facebook and Twitter, I don't know about TikTok and Instagram because I refuse to do that part, but could we highlight maybe some of the youth accomplishments, like maybe when they do 4H cleanup or, you know, one of the teams is going to provincials, like, could we could we highlight highlight that on our social media? I like the ideas that they they bring something to us, like maybe it's a social studies class that brings something to us, some ideas that we could use. I think there also has to be a little initiative on their part as well. We can't always come up with all the ideas and fix everything. I know on MLA Cooper's UCP Old Tisserie Three Hills Board, there's a high school student on his his board. And so that student has taken the initiative. He's interested in politics and and has just gone out of his way to to become involved. So I like them to come up with some ideas and how they can bring those to fruition. But, you know, the the social media piece, let's use it. One, I know one one of the students mentioned bulletin boards. I mean, that's a pretty simple thing, like maybe we could take some information that, you know, but our next meetings or or events that are coming up or those engagement activities when we have rate pair meetings, go put that up at the school. That's a pretty easy thing to do and something that was highlighted in in one of their essays. So just a few thoughts on that.
Well, as I look at the bullet points, I noticed that awareness of impact of local government is not high. Well, as I look at the bullet points, I noticed that awareness of impact of local government is not high. It is not seen as interesting or fun. I dare say that's not just limited to youth. Just an observation.
But social media is fun. So it's.
So you're gonna be on TikTok.
So how do we go the back doorway of making municipal government fun? You find the fun tool that then has the subject of municipal government and then they find the fun in it.
Okay, we'll try to have fun.
Couldn't believe, I couldn't believe I heard you say social media is fun.
So where are we at? Are we looking for more ideas or are we?
I think what we've, what we've heard so far, um, at a high level is, um, looking at that, that presence on social media. Um, we do have a, as councils are aware, we are in development of a county podcast. Um, that's not in targeting youth specifically. That's more the broad, everybody education. Um, so I think our current timeframe is working about mid-January for the first one of those to come out potentially. That's still being sorted out because there's some backend partnerships that we're looking at too. Um, but the, you know, that idea of being more active on social media, uh, you know, we'll explore what that looks like in terms of if there's a different, a, you know, a Neale County brand that's tailored at youth or that sort of stuff. But these are all things that today is the thirty thousand foot ideas, right? And we sort into it. So when we talk about that we want to have more involvement in the schools, um, so a few different tendrils that that can, that can be, right? Is that, uh, you know, we're looking at whether that's school news, uh, looking at how we integrate into civics. Um, one of the problems that I think we, um, I'll say it this way. One of the problems that I think we have as local government is even the curriculum setup. Um, and I don't know if this part's changed or not, but to my knowledge it hasn't. Uh, you learn local government, I think, or government, I think in grade six. Um, in grade six, you're not in a place to understand what it is that you're learning. Um, and frankly, I, I enjoyed attending question period at the legislature in grade six, but if that's defining my understanding of government, we're in trouble. So the, yeah. Yeah, I believe, I believe Mr. Klein gave the answer of, I may remember, I may not, I don't know. And everybody applauded and sat down. And so what I took from that is we're in trouble. But that's, that's question period, right? So we have a, you know, as we get into tying into maybe some of those social studies curriculums through the career stuff, maybe the comm classes, that was brought out in the essays as well. Um, how we tie that in? Um, when I talk about a function of resources, you know, it would take, it would take funding to do it. But when you bring somebody in to do the, the orientation, in the, in the past, we brought in strategic steps, that's Ian McCormick. Maybe they're interested in sticking around a couple of extra days and we send them to do our presentations. You know, they're not gonna do an orientation for eight hours a day in a school. But, you know, to go in to speak in some of those classes, right? To talk about local government. Um, there's probably individuals out there that would be interested in that. And that, you know, so there's another way of school integration. Um, and that one is really just money. There's not a ton more beyond that, right? But, so there's different factors. So like what we're hearing is explore ways of getting into the schools. You know, what that looks like, we figure that out when we see the willingness and what's the opportunity when we get in there, right? But.
Counselor McGee.
I like that idea, but to me, the value has to be that they are engaged in making things happen. When adults are providing it and giving the format, you lose them right off the bat. The starting point is engaging them the way they want to be part of things. And so as much as I love going to the schools, I do not think that's the starting point. It's dry, boring, and it's accommodating to that. We need to have it, that they have ownership of what they're hearing and of what they want to have input on.
I think, I think through the chair, what we're, what we'd approach is, um, like it wouldn't be one prong, as you're talking multiple prongs, right? As you wouldn't do one, hopefully, you wouldn't do one to the exclusion of the others, right? As it, you'd be multifaceted. Like, one of the ones that hasn't come up now that I've got a bullet point down, um, I've already thinking about, we have a public participation policy that's coming up on, looking for some revisions for that. Um, you can tie into that policy some things that are specific to youth engagement. So if by council policy, we don't undertake engagements on large statutory plans like the LUB or the MDP without a youth component, you can embed that in policy. And what that does for us as staff is it tells us when we design that engagement process, we need to have something like that in there or that incorporates it somehow, right? Um, so there, there's other tools that you can, you can do on, on, with those types of things as well, right? Um, how far you want to go on that? You talk about decision-making and stuff like that. And it says, um, and I move my chair away from Carolyn a little bit before I say this, but we have, we, you've got coming up in, at a future council meeting, your community grants, right? You as council have been making those, those decisions. Is there a recommendation that youth are getting involved to help determine who those grants go to? Which starts to build an understanding of what those other organizations are that are out there. You know, we've got, um, and I hope I don't, I'm not about to put my foot in my mouth, but we've got a presentation coming up from the Neale Adult Learning Society. You know, if they or seniors outreach or any of those groups, um, was applying for funding from the county and part of the decision-making is youth, there'd be, have to be an awareness of what those entities are. Um, you know, I know that there's some, that, that there's some younger participation in Neale Adult Learning, but I look at seniors outreach that we had here at a previous meeting. How much youth involvement or awareness is there? If that's a community function out there and what purpose it serves, right? So, you know, if they're helping determine some of that stuff, maybe that's a bit too far at the present time. Maybe it's not, right? But those are other things that can tie into councils. Your processes are where you want to go with that.
Counselor McGee.
Told you I have ideas, so sorry, gotta keep it going. Um, I, I like what you said a lot, Mr. Hogan, and I think there's, there's room to even discuss. Do we, um, have a portion of community grants for a program that includes the youth in their programming? So something that highlights, maybe it's a mentorship program through seniors outreach that they're doing. And so there's a specific fund that says that you're engaging youth and in order to access those grants. That's another possibility we could look at. Um, I also think, uh, we used to give fair bit to teams or any of the other youth entity. If a youth entity comes asking for, for a grant, I believe a youth person should be presenting that information, not the adult. Um, alongside the adult, yes, but I think we need to see the youth be part of it. I, for me, again, it's about the youth participating and having ownership of this engagement, that it's not provided by adults, but it's theirs. We are there to facilitate it and the model I use is 4H. That's what 4H is all about. There's many adults involved in 4H, facilitating 4H, but the kids are the drivers. They're the doers. And I think we need to have somewhat a similar capacity in all of those entities.
Counselor Cunningham.
So Counselor McGee, you just absolutely hit it out of the park with that. Um, when Mr. Hogan mentioned, um, seniors outreach, um, when I was administrator of that program, um, there was an existing piece called Gifts for Grandparents. And we really got the youth engaged with that where, um, I went in and spoke to the students at the school and, um, had good conversations around the fact that some seniors in our communities have no family. And perhaps that visit from, um, somebody from seniors outreach or a student taking a small gift, that might be the only, um, contact that those seniors have, have with someone at Christmas. And it was very eye-opening for the students. So I think Counselor McGee hit it right on the head. We, we have to get the kids involved and engaged and give them some ownership to some of these programs and it'll be way more powerful than just, than just talking. They ha- they have to get involved. And that, we just found that once they came and they helped pack presents for the seniors and, and some of them helped deliver them and it just, yeah, it, it just was everything. So we have to get them involved and engaged and ownership to some of these ideas for sure.
Is there anything else?
I just wanted to note that we, last year, we did approve the youth, youth event sponsorship that talks to what you guys were just speaking to, that youth can apply to, um, have, um, do different, um, um, uh, they can do different, um, things and, and the council can approve, can approve it. We did approve the, I know the 4H group this year for their, um, for their program. And I believe there was one other, I just can't think of the top of my head what it was for, but you did approve this last year.
Just furthermore, um, just furthermore to that, like, and I, I hear what Counselor McGee is saying here. It would be nice if those members or a member on the district for 4H did come in and tell, like, I know all about it, but some of you may not know. So it's nice if they do come in or if it was a soccer team, if it was whatever. It is kind of cool if they came in and did five minutes and, you know. It shows other youth too that this happens and, you know, don't be afraid. The, the council is just human and they're prepared to listen to us, so. But that's down the road. We could amend this policy, you know, down the road.
I believe that was a discussion at, when we did, um, create this policy. But, um, it was also determined that when we have our council meetings, that kids are in school at the same time, they not might, might not be able to make it. So it was like, it was an option for them to present.
So then I think we have to put it back there that we, we can work through our lunch hour. We want to hear from the youth. So that could be something we have i- at twelve-thirty and, you know, we could take an early lunch or a late lunch, um, just to, to, um, work with the youth.
Counselor McGee.
It's also been my experience, schools are very good at adapting for something as important as this.
Counselor Penner.
I guess as a council, we just have to remember too that, you know, if we're directing administration or the staff to go into the schools or after hours to different groups, 4H whoever, that there is a cost to it. So just keep that in the back of your mind. Um, none of this is free and so, um, but, but we need to do it. We need to somehow work, work through this and get them involved. And I just think, put it back in their hands, throw these questions back in their hands. Let me know, wh- why, you know?
Okay, are we good or are we gonna try some more? So school councils, um, is, I guess I'm trying to figure out a way how you could bring in a speaker during a school council meeting. Uh, is it just high school or do they have, well, probably high school would be the more appropriate place to hold it. But is there a way that we could involve, uh, guest speaker at one of their school council meetings? I don't know how long they last. I have no idea what their business is other than trying to figure out who the president is.
There's actually school councils for every elementary, junior high, high school. But if we're faking out some money, I think it's more valuable to the high school. They're already thinking a little bit, so that's a great idea.
I, and I have totally the opposite theory. I think it's valuable the younger they are. So you start with some very basic ideas, like, you know, uh, we just spent a pile of money putting these nice planter boxes all over our town. Uh, when you dump them over, your parents have to pay for it through taxes. Have them have an exercise where they are pooling their money. They're all given coins and you say, okay, now ten percent of those have to come to your municipal taxes. Uh, what you want to do to buy it? Do a simulation of buying the, the planter boxes. One of the kids wrecks them. What do we do now? Something as simple as that. I think that's where you instill civic responsibility. In my opinion, once they're in high school, they have their ideas. If we want to start developing civic responsibility ideas, we need to get them when they're still learning their, their idealisms.
Counselor Phillips.
Um, Carolyn, could you please put back up that policy? Cause I think it addresses the age and I want to say I thought I seen six to eighteen.
Here it is. Eligibility.
So just furthermore, so maybe we have, there's three different levels of programs that we do. But we do have somebody, and we do make donations, um, Carolyn, you might be able to remember, to the school program where they go, there's different levels. There's a booklet for different grades, um, and we make a donation towards it. Um, it's taught in this. Junior achievements or something? Yeah, it's something like that. I can't remember, sorry. And we as a, Neale County do give money towards that program.
Yes, we do support, um, junior achievement. I believe it's three thousand dollars a year to junior achievement.
Okay, yeah, so it's a similar idea to that, although they've got, almost every grade has a different book. We could be just doing an elementary, um, little program or in a junior high, just three different ones or something. So I guess, Mr. Hogan, do you understand what we're saying here?
Here's this.
Yeah, so I think, I think what I've taken is, uh, everything's on the table right now. Is, and that, and that, uh, that's, you know, good information for us at this point. Um, obviously there'll be decisions that council has to make going forward when we start to say, okay, here's the resources required, here's this, um, you know, anything. And what I'm envisioning is that when we come back, that there's going to be a, I'm gonna call it a framework. It might not be that by the end of, when we're done with it. But, um, a framework that outlines, here are the programs, here are the initiatives that we're undertaking or we're proposing to undertake, and here's what's required to go into them. Um, some of them you're already doing. And so when I look in some of, at some of those things, like sponsorship, we just talked about it. Sponsor, sponsorship of, uh, junior achievement. Um, one of the things that we've not talked about in here is, is youth mental health. Um, you know, but you are funding programs through FCSs, right? So part of that framework might be continued support of that funding, right? To keep those programs going. To me, that does tie into something that we're doing for, for the community that's targeting youth, right? It would become part of the, call it the county's youth initiative. It'd be one stream, right? And what that does is if you endorse it, and that's guidance for us, that, you know what? We're not looking for that program to end, we're gonna keep, keep putting it back in the budget, right? Um, but that is one that you're already doing, right? Um, you might have discussions around whether the current service level is where you want it. You know, should it decrease, stay the same, increase? All of those come with other funding considerations, right? So, you know, there are some of those things that we're already doing. You know, the county's openness towards participating in the RAP program, right? Which, you know, we will do. Um, we've done work experience programs, um, or co-ops for, those are primarily more of that post-secondary, like that business, um, office admin diplomas or stuff like that, right? So we've, we've participated in, in some of those, um, I think successfully. So we do have, we do have some of those that, uh, you know, we're already doing that would, that would tie in. Uh, we have a number of functions that our peace officers are doing in the schools, right? That's an existing program that we may keep, that we may, um, you know, we may have the opportunity to build upon. Um, again, that comes with choices, right? Is, you know, the, the hours that our peace officers are spending in the school are hours they're not spending out on the roads, right? Council mentioned one of the other trade-offs before is, um, you know, I can send a bunch of staff into schools, uh, to do different work, but that's, we pay an opportunity cost for that, right? While they're doing that, they're not doing something else. There's nothing we do that doesn't come with an opportunity cost. It's just where you want to see those resources spent.
Counselor McGee.
Sorry, this is just my wheelhouse. I have lots of fun with youth, uh, idealisms and ideas. Uh, you just highlighted again that why we are hearing in the essays that it needs to be meaningful and engaging with them. We have a lot of high-level language, a lot of high-level things happening. We definitely care and have done lots with youth, but the youth don't know that.
Yeah.
It's not framed in the way that they understand that. And that's what we're missing. And that goes back again to. And that goes back again to how we're communicating, how are they being engaged with that knowledge and participating in it? Because if you're not participating, it's just some hierarchy providing it to me. And it becomes as simple as the clouds in the sky and have little to the, right? It doesn't matter. So to me, that has to be the point, is how do we make them engaged in this knowledge?
Reeve King.
How do we invite them to be engaged? There's no way that we can make them be engaged.
Excellent vocabulary. Thank you.
Counselor Penner.
So to me, it comes back down to the relationship with the schools, how we can get inside the school. Because we can't make the schools do their stuff. It's totally up to the teachers to instigate it. Like we, through the aid service board, we have the CAPS program, Craft and Agricultural Program, that Michelle will go into the schools, into the grade four classrooms. And it's just mind-boggling that some of these schools don't take her up on it. And so that is so frustrating. So we've got to try and make a strong relationship with all the individual schools. Because we can sit here and design all these programs, but whether they take part in or implement them is another thing. So that school relationship is very high, in my books.
Mr. Hogan.
Mr. Chair, some of the, you know, and some of that maybe that we wrote, wrote down here, all the schools in the division have PD days. And so that might be a start there, is how do we, as, and again, you're diverting staff to go into those days, right? But how do we get in there to, to talk about, not programs the county will be putting in or potential, but to talk to the teachers to be, are you aware that we could do this type of thing if you found it of merit? You know, when you're teaching comm or social studies or this other thing, you know, we could assist in this if you wanted our help. And so it's more of that, you know, that, the willingness to allow us in there to do that type of thing is of course not up to us. But I mean, we could try, right? That's, that's a potential to, to get in there too, to even increase the awareness that not necessarily all of the ideas might be flowing from our side. There might be ones that come to us if they know it's a possibility to, hey, I've got this idea. Would the county be interested? Well, they told us at the PD day that they were. So we can toss it their way, right? And you might get some stuff coming to us instead of us having to generate everything too.
Okay, I don't want to stifle conversation here, but we do have a delegation at 11. So what I recommend we do is we're going to take a three-minute recess. And then we will come back to the delegation and then we will go back to the subject after that. Is that going to give you enough time to get set up, Ms. DeBrowski? You believe so? Okay, very good then. I'm sure Ms. Vanderkuul will. Okay, we're good, Carolyn? Okay. All right, I will bring the meeting back to order. We have a delegation, Neoh Adult Learning. Welcome, Ms. DeBrowski. We will introduce ourselves and then give you the opportunity to introduce yourself and then go on with the presentation. So to start with, on screen, we have a counselor that is video conferencing in, so.
Hi, thanks for coming. I'm, I'm home with laryngitis, as you might know, or here for me. So I'm Laurlee Michelle Cunningham and I'm Division Five, so I'm in areas surrounding Three Hills. Thank you for coming again.
Good morning. Thanks for coming again. Debbie Penner, I'm Division Two, down the Swallow area.
Good morning. I'm Fay McGee, Division One.
Carrie Phillips, Division Four.
Good morning. Jerry Whitstock, Division Three, that's the Acby Linden area.
Good morning. I'm Ken King and I represent the northeast portion of Neoh County. So Troschu in north and east, not the town of Troschu, but everything around it.
I'm Wade Christie. I'm in the northwest in Division Six. My mother was a schoolteacher and she insisted all her children stayed in secondary education till they realized what little they knew.
And our CEO.
That was the point.
Mike?
Thank you. Mike Hogan, Chief Administrative Officer.
Kevin Gannon, Director of Community Services.
Hi, Teresa Cochran, Director of Corporate Services.
Carolyn Vanderkuul, Legislative Services Manager.
Oh, could you please just touch the mic till the screen? Yeah, there you go.
Okay, is that, oh, wow. Yes, okay, wonderful. Yes, I'm Emma DeBrowski. I'm the Director of Neoh Adult Learning and Newcomer Services. More of a delegate than a delegation, but that's okay. And we have submitted an application for the county community grants. And so we're just here to, or I'm just here on behalf of our team to present a little bit about who we are and the application that we have now. I'm assuming everybody has the PowerPoint in front of you as well. So I'm not actually going to read each screen, but just a little bit about us. We are a nonprofit organization. We are local. We've been providing lifelong, lifelong learning opportunities and community supports for over 50 years. In 2022, we received an additional grant to add support services and resources for newcomers to Canada. We have five staff members. Michelle is missing from this photo. And we can be found providing programs and services throughout Neoh County. As a, oops, sorry. Oh my, there we go. As a not-for-profit organization, we are governed by a volunteer board of directors and we operate solely under grants. Our main programming and service, services grants are provincial. We do supplement those grants for smaller projects through other means. One, one way was in 2020, we were the recipient of a Neoh County community grant and we used that to put on a free community workshop addressing suicide awareness in the area. Okay, so our mission statement really just highlights our commitment to making Neoh County a strong and thriving rural community. And we are guided by our values and principles, which include lifelong learning, community empowerment, partnerships, respect, and diversity and inclusion. Okay, so just a brief overview of the different things we do. We provide learning opportunities for adults to build on foundational skills, digital, math, literacy, English language learning and soft skills. Beyond that, we also, community more general learning. We have language classes like Spanish, French and Cree and information sessions, as well as safety certifications. And we provide information and resources for, for upgrading and post-secondary planning. We are a Campus Alberta Central partner site. And that is a collaboration between Olds College and Red Deer Polytechnic. So for us, one of our favorite personal, our, our favorite learning opportunities is the Thursday afternoons. We have learning for adults in the area with diverse abilities. And yeah, that is quite a special program for us. They have a great time, but I think we might have a better time. Anyways, we are very involved in community building. We were one of, we were a significant part of the initial creation of Lunch with Friends. And we continue to provide mentorship, training and administrative supports for their volunteer team and board. And Josh, our digital coordinator, does help a lot of other nonprofits and organizations in the county with the digital aspects of their programs and their organization to help them to provide better services. And we also, excuse me, provide space for organizations that provide services that aren't available in the county but are under the mandate. So we have an employment agency that meets in our space, meets with their clients. We work with and provide space to True North, which is a domestic violence organization. They meet with their clients and, who are in the area. And they, they use our office space to do that. And also Fisher Farms, which is another organization like Rehoboth that offers supports for adults with developmental disabilities. Sorry. And we are also, are quite involved in employment services for the area. When Jacqueline Buchanan left, we took over the Employment Community Job Board. We are also participating with Wendy and Jenna here in the economic, the business retention and expansion project. Part of the survey, we've been speaking into that survey to make sure that it is reflecting the trends and needs, issues of newcomers to Canada. And so we're looking forward to continuing to work with them on that. And I'll try and be quick here with, we also, since 2022, offer direct services, settlement services. Also, just under a grant, we aren't, we aren't a government organization. And so that mostly involves community orientation, access to local services, a translation and interpretation, workshops that are applicable for people who are new to Canada and also new to Neoh County. We have, were quite and continue to still be involved in supporting the workers that were affected by that awful fire at Sunterra Meats. And so we've been working with the town of Troschu to make sure that those, excuse me, that those affected are supported and, and aware of what's available for them. And indirect services as well, we try to make sure that we're supporting other local stakeholders, employers and community members to equip them to better respond to needs of newcomers to the county, including labor market integration for newcomers and raising community awareness. I don't know if anybody had a chance to be part of our recent International Discovery Night, which we had here to celebrate the diversity in our county. Thank you, Neoh County, for supplying your flag. And can see it's right next to Stuart there in our Canadian display. So, okay. All right, and we are really, we will serve anybody primarily. We look to support adults, young adults, to seniors. But we generally don't offer programs for children or for seniors beyond our digital services because seniors outreach does a fantastic job. So does FCSS. And we are not interested in duplicating services. But where there are gaps, we try to fill them. So this last year, from July to June, which is our fiscal year, we had over nearly 1,500 registrations for our programs and services. And amongst those was over 500 unique participants. And, you know, almost 2,000 hours in, program hours involved in, in supporting and helping and providing programs. In the last two and a half years or so, we have served little over 300 newcomers to Canada that have settled in this area. That does not include their families. That's numbers of adults. And those people represent about 21 different countries. So we are actually quite a diverse county here. And we feel like we're in a kind of a unique situation or a unique place to be able to track those trends and, and be aware of what's going on. So, okay. As much as possible, and we're, this is going to kind of go into my, to our project here. We try to overcome barriers for, for folks locally. We have house calls for seniors. Josh does a lot of his digital programming in the other communities so people don't need to drive here or at the, like, Linden Lodge and other seniors facilities. We have low or no-cost registration and we provide snacks and tea and. and we provide snacks and tea and water as much as possible. Yeah, okay. So, on to our proposed project. We have a kind of three, three parts to this project. The first one would be a children's play area is what we're wanting to develop here. And we really, we don't offer, as I said, children's programming. We are primarily adult learning. But we have parents who, in order to participate in our programming, need to bring small children. And at the moment, like this bottom picture there, they're actually at my desk coloring, and I'm keeping them busy while moms are in ESL classes. It's not ideal, although it's fun for me. But we really would like to have a, something that we can set up and take down, and nothing too fancy, but that just kind of keeps them contained and safe. And yeah, so that is the first part of our project that we're asking the county for some help with. We do work with and partner with Prairie College. We have a group of students that come and will look after, you know, the little ones and also participate as conversation partners during ESL, and that's great. But to have a space that's for them, especially at that age, they're busy, so. Okay, the second part of our project is we are hoping to do some kitchen modifications. It's an older area with, as you can see, really, there's not much for cabinets or for fridge or anything like that. And we'd like to update that a little bit to make it a bit more of a usable space. We do provide snacks for folks that are engaged in our learning, that struggle with food security, so that they can focus on learning and not that they're hungry or, you know, and we're not talking meals, but yeah. And we do have people that drop off donations for Lunch with Friends or just to, you know, distribute amongst people who are struggling. And at this point, we don't really have space to put that. We also have, for anybody that's been behind our office, we do have an accessible garden that raised beds and free space for anybody that doesn't have a garden space and would like to use it to grow. We've got strawberries and raspberries and carrots and all sorts of stuff growing, and it's free for whoever wants it. But sometimes if we need to pick it, we need to put it somewhere before some people can come and pick it up, so. Okay, and last but not least is a laundry area. And this, there is no, maybe you guys probably already know there are no local public laundry facilities. And the local low-income housing does not have laundry. So we have vulnerable people in our communities that often don't leave their homes because they don't have clean clothes. And there's just, it's, yeah. That prevents people from participating in their community. It limits their employment choices, and it limits the services that they can access, including ours. And so to address this, we would like to just get a small, you know, stackable washer dryer and kind of put it in that little spare space that we have there. Not as a public laundromat, but to be able to meet those needs as we see them with those people that we have relationships with, that we know are, this is a barrier for them, clean clothes. And to just kind of provide that opportunity for dignity for people. And hopefully, at some point, these, the communities in Neill County will have laundry facilities again, but at this point, they do not. And so this is just our desire to address that need and support folks that, yeah, that are vulnerable because of that. So yeah, we have asked for our total of all of what we've got proposed is about $5,500. And we're just asking if the county would meet us with a grant of $2,750. And so, yeah, I think I raced through that, but, you know. If you have any questions, I'm open for that clarification. Yeah.
Wow, I didn't realize you guys did all that stuff.
Oh, well, then I'm especially glad I came.
And I didn't realize you could do what you're looking to do for that little bit amount of money.
Well, we are, I mean, like every nonprofit, we are used to making every penny go as far as it can. And so, and we do work with a lot of volunteers. And I probably have the number somewhere. Hundreds of volunteer hours go into making this happen. It's not just the five of us, so, yeah.
Does council have any questions of Ms. DeBroski? Counselor Cunningham.
Okay, so I'll try to be brief. So just a couple of comments. I love your diverse abilities piece. It's amazing to see those faces around town and engaged in our community, so good work on that. Personally, I want to thank you for the digital services for seniors. My kids appreciate that their grandma gets help, so they're not always getting that phone call.
We hear about a lot.
Yes, I bet you do, yeah. I just wondered if you could tell us a little bit, or tell me a little bit more about Campus Alberta. I just would like to know that little bit of connection between you folks and those Red Deer Polytechnic and Oles. And then my last one is just, this is just a suggestion, and the rest of council knows you'll hear me all the time banging the drum about shopping local. When I see your proposed project, I do see you're looking for, you're sourcing your stuff from outside the community. My suggestion would just be if there's any ways you can shop in-house or locally. Sometimes that bodes well. People in the community are maybe willing to give donations or perhaps a little bit of breaks on their products when it's local. So that's just, just a little one of my thoughts there, so thanks for presenting.
Yeah, you bet. So I'll start with the CAC, so Campus Alberta Central. We have been a partner site or an information site for them for quite a while. They provide us a small annual stipend or honorarium for us to have materials, promotional materials for them at our office. We try to stay informed on what programs they're offering. And on our social media, we promote their courses, their programs, events, and things like that. So it probably doesn't go much beyond that. But we are definitely listed as a partner site for them, as that is something we do is provide some post-secondary counseling when people need that. So, yeah. And then as for shopping locally, that is absolutely a priority for us. But we're, as I had just said, we're always balancing cost with that. And so when putting together a proposal, yeah. Well, we want to keep our costs down. And so these are where, this is where we went to source numbers to put into our proposal. If we're able to find something locally, items locally, that would fit within what we've been allowed, then we absolutely will do that. But sometimes we're just, we're limited by what our budget is, so. Yeah, but we do try to do local, like our International Discovery Night. Most of the food that we brought in was contracted through local businesses from Torrington for our Ukrainian snacks and here for our Indian food and the Korean food. We do try to go local as much as possible. Sometimes cost is just, yeah. Just bottom line sometimes just has to play into it, unfortunately, so. Yeah, did that answer that?
Yeah, for sure. And again, just, you know, it's always the encouragement just to try local. You never know, sometimes, especially if they're aware of the project and what's going on, they're willing to maybe give a deal. So just, I always encourage everyone just to give local a chance. And I appreciate the clarification, because I wasn't sure with that connection to the Red Deer Polytechnic and Oles, if there was an ability. I know rural, we have a hard time sometimes with that accessibility to the post-secondary. So thank you for clarifying that, because there is an ability for someone to take us post-secondary course through Neill Adult Learning, but they can get information, correct?
Yeah, they can't take a course through us, but we can. We do provide also like exam invigilation for post-secondary. So if there is a local student engaged in a course and needs to take a final exam, they can come to our office, and we have agreements with some of the post-secondaries where we can invigilate that for them, which saves them having to drive to a larger center. Yeah, we have conferencing. Yeah, anyways, yeah, so.
Counselor Penner.
A quick question. So your employment services, do you help employers with the LMIA forms and all that kind of stuff?
Not with putting them through, not putting them together. So much with the Rural Renewal Committee, which I personally don't sit on. My coworkers do. They are approving employers to have LMIA's through that. So and beyond that, I don't want to speak out of turn. I'm sorry. We, yeah, we do, we do work with employers with providing information about the program. And then, like I said, we sit on all of the, sorry, maple bug, all of the Rural Renewal Committees, except for the one in Three Hills. So, but all the other ones were part of that process, so.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions? Well, it doesn't look like it.
Okay.
Counselor Cunningham, you have another.
Yeah, I know, they have a hard time keeping me quiet even with laryngitis. But anyhow, more of just a thank you for the awareness that there is no laundry services, because now that I think about that, I think in most of our communities, that definitely is something we're missing. And that's a little bit frightening to me that we have a low-income facility that doesn't provide that. So that's an advocacy piece for another day, but thank you for bringing that awareness forward. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay, well, thank you very much for coming in, for presenting, for showing us what it is that you do.
Thank you.
You do amazing work. I did not even realize you were doing this much stuff. So that's really eye-opening for us and really hoping that your project goes together. And I've done IKEA stuff before, and you get to be really good at stuff there.
Well, well, yeah.
Yeah, that's an upset, eh?
That won't be me personally doing that, so. But yeah, we'll book another time to come in and present maybe a little bit more in depth, certainly with our newcomer services, as that is a county-wide point of interest, for sure. So, but yeah, thank you.
All right. Well, again, thank you for coming in, and we look forward to coming back sometime.
Thanks so much.
All righty, so we are going back to the youth sponsorship discussion. And maybe we're done the youth sponsorship discussion. Who knows? Thanks, Carolyn. So anything more to do with youth sponsorship? Is there anything else that you need, Mr. Hogan or Mr. Gannon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we're...
Are you sure you weren't going to ask that question? I tried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we're, I think we're good. We have enough to start exploring or putting a framework together.
Okay. Is there anything more from council, other than maybe a motion? Lee King.
So I don't hear a lot more discussion, so I'll make the motion that the committee of the whole recommend that council move forward with the exploration of youth, of a youth engagement framework.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion to recommend to council. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, I'll call the vote. All those in favor. And that is carried unanimously. Okay, that brings us to the end of our open agenda. Does anyone want a break before we go into closed? How long is closed going to take? Any idea?
So is the answer, it's up to you. We're envisioning there...
Okay, well, then I will say that we are going to go have a recess back at 11:40.